Oh, it's exactly seven o'clock. Oh, my goodness. That's amazing. I have a little card printed up in case we needed to put something up. Okay. All right, we are just about streaming live, so going to let. I'm just, I'm just waiting to get confirmation that we're streaming live, but it looks like we are. So on my end, it looks technically like we are. I'm waiting for confirmation and then we will start the forum. Sorry, bear with us. Hey, Donna, go ahead.
Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Morris Town area, I'm pleased to welcome you to our first virtual forum for the Madison Board of Ed. We are doing our best to ensure the entire forum runs smoothly. My name is Donna Goriglia. I'm co-president of the Morris Town Area League. The League of Women Voters of the Morris Town area is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Empowering voters, defending democracy is our message. Elections and voting are core concerns for the league. We are committed to providing fact-based information about issues and positions candidates take on those issues to help voters make their own decisions and participate in our electoral process. We envision a democracy where everybody has the right, the knowledge, the confidence, and the opportunity to participate. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes candidates for office or political parties. Any use of the league name or footage from this debate in campaign materials, literature, or advertising of any kind, including internet, cable, or television, has not been authorized by the League of Women Voters. Co-sponsoring this event, we welcome the Morris County NAACP and thank Jackie Cobb, Executive Secretary for the Morris County Branch, who is also a fellow league member, for working with us. The National Association for the Advancement of Colored People is a multi-ethnic coalition of freedom fighters who are in pursuit of the beloved community. The NAACP was founded in 1909 in response to the ongoing violence against black people around the country. It is the largest and most preeminent civil rights organization in the nation. We have over 2,200 units and branches across the country, along with well over 2 million activists. Our mission is to secure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights in order to eliminate race-based discrimination and ensure the health and well-being of all persons. We look forward to continuing our work together with the NAACP. If you would like to participate in any of our efforts, the league actively seeks diversity within our membership. You must be 16 years old and a U.S. citizen to be a voting member. We also encourage everybody to go to vote411.org, which provides a one-stop site for information on all aspects of voting in New Jersey, as well as information about all candidates up and down the ballot. All of our former forums are being livestreamed on the Morris Town area League of Women Voters YouTube channel. Future confirmed forums include: September 30th, the Morris School District Board of Ed at 7:00 P.M. October 1st, the Chatham Borough Council at 7:00 P.M. October 15th, the Chatham Township Committee at 7:00 P.M. And on October 12th, the Morris County Freeholder Candidates at 7:30 P.M. Additional local forums, as well as forums for the Legislative District 25 for Assembly and Senate, are in the works and will be posted once they're confirmed. At this time, I would like to introduce our moderator, Susan Ferris-Writes. Per league practice, she is not from our voting district. Susan is a league-trained moderator and a member of the Berkeley Heights New Providence League. She will now introduce the candidates and outline the format for this evening.
Okay, thank you. My name is Susan Ferris-Writes. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters for Berkeley Heights New Providence and Summit. And this is a candidate forum for Board of Education in Madison. We have four candidates tonight: Kara Hines, David Irwin, Heather Reddy, and Pamela Yaosi. I hope I've said everyone's name correctly. Okay. Before we begin, each candidate will offer a brief statement discussing their qualifications, and those statements will last up to two minutes. Once we've done that, we will then proceed to answer some questions that we have for the candidates. Each candidate will have a minute to respond to each question. That is, each candidate can respond to each question. If a rebuttal is requested, there'll be a 30-second time allotment. A timekeeper is going to hold up a card, so we have an idea of where we are. And at the end, we'll have closing remarks by each candidate, two minutes again for their remarks. I don't think there are any questions because we kind of had like a pre-convo about this before we got started. So let me get started with the very first question, and we're going to start with Kara answering it first. So the first question that I have is this. By the way, the questions were not prepared by the league. They were prepared by members of the public. These are actual questions being presented from your voters. So, question one: "Our schools seem like they are suffering from lack of maintenance and improvements." Do you have a sense that that is true? And if so, do you have a sense of the administration's plan for carrying out capital improvements and overall maintenance? Kara, first.
So I agree, that is true. I've actually attended board meetings for approximately 10 years now, off and on. It's always been something that's been on the docket at different points through the 10 years to address. Unfortunately, I am not privy to the information as far as the details as to a strategy or a plan going forward. And that is one of my concerns going forward with the Board of Ed. And something I would like to address, so rolls back into budget, which is always going to be the number one issue, top-down.
Okay, thank you. Okay, David Irwin, would you like to address that?
Can you make sure, can I actually just repeat the question again? I just want to make sure I'm answering it correctly.
Sure. It says, "Our schools seem like they are suffering from lack of maintenance and improvements." Basically, do you have a sense of the administration's plan for carrying out capital improvements and overall maintenance?
Yes, I agree. Our buildings are in great need of improvement. Now, I've often had a chance to go either visiting my kids' sports at other schools and have been jealous of what I've seen from what facilities look like. Unfortunately, our finances are that, you know, we have just enough to operate our budget. We have barely enough to put aside for capital expenditures. The money that we put aside this year for capital expenditures is being taken up by COVID right now. We need to make some adjustments to it. We've gone through some big changes right now, and I think, you know, absent any type of eventual referendum, we're just putting Band-Aid on issues right now. It's for the taxes that our community members pay. It's, we should have beautiful facilities, and we don't have them at all. My hope is that at some point, when we can get to it, we will, you know, we'll have to take on this and be able to convince the community that this is something important for us and is really important for our students. Thanks.
Okay, Heather Reddy, would you like to answer that question?
I would. I would just point out, we didn't get to do our opening statements. I'm not sure if we were supposed to do them before this, but...
Yeah, we were, and I think we talked so much before this that I overlooked that. So let's answer this question, and then we'll scoot back to that if you don't mind. I apologize.
Absolutely perfect. Yes, sorry. So I absolutely echo David and Kara's statements. What I would add to that is that for the past 20 or so years, our board, before any of our times, invested deeply in our children's education. And arguably, that's the right place to put financial focus, is on the best teachers and on the best programs, on the best STEAM labs and biology labs, and offering the most to our children. And because of that, our facilities have suffered greatly. And so I think that in the next three years, it absolutely needs to be a focus, building a plan for the long term for our facilities. I think that is nearly the top of our list, and I think we need to probably turn it over to our community to figure out how we do that.
Okay, and Pamela Yaosi?
Yeah, I don't think anybody would dispute that our buildings are in dire need of help. And as both Heather, as everyone said, we've prioritized learning for our children above all else. It's important for the community to understand that our taxes can only be raised 2% every year, and that equates to about $800,000. And in the past several years, the increases in healthcare have prohibited us from being able to use that money in a meaningful way to address some of our maintenance needs and facilities needs. So we do, it is an imperative for the board. It is an imperative for the administration. We've asked our Director of Facilities to give us a plan for long-term, what that looks like. And as David and Heather have said, it's a matter of going to the community and seeing what the community is willing to bear.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to sort of go backwards, and we're going to have everyone do their two-minute intro to them, since we seemed to have skipped over that. So why don't we start with Kara? You may go first. Just like a two-minute intro into who you are, what you're about.
All right. Okay. So my name is Kara Hines. I am a 15-year resident of Madison, and my two girls attend the public school system. One is at the junior school, one is at the high school. And I've been heavily invested in the school system here. I believe in our district. Essentially, I've worked many roles within the schools and on the fields in the community here. My background is in finance and sales. I believe in collaboration, teamwork, and I have a very analytical sense. Within the schools, I've contributed as a Board of Education liaison. So I started going to the Board of Education meetings initially 10 years ago for the PTOs to get a better sense of what was happening at a higher level. I've done many roles and ended up as the Torrey J. PTO President, as well as the MJSAO Vice President, and many fundraisers and events for both the elementary and the MJS schools. So I am active. I am available as far as assisting people, and I get my hands dirty, and I really like to dig in on the ground. So with that being said, what I've seen over the 10 years and how the district has evolved, I think we've done a really good job with our programming and curriculum. We've been impressed with it, to be quite frank, with the STEM and the STEAM stuff. But what I think we really need to address is the budget issue, which is going to be an issue with COVID, just state-level-wise. We're not going to be getting the state funding. That's unreliable. It hasn't been funded appropriately up at that level. We can't rely on that. And then within the schools itself, we have rising costs consistently, as well as now we have to look at building, maintenance, and infrastructure. So I would really love the opportunity to be able to serve the community and assist and create a strategy and have a dialogue about what's happening.
Okay, thanks. Okay, David Irwin, could you do an intro, please?
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for coordinating hosting this forum. Thanks to the community members who have joined here today or might look later. Thanks to my colleagues, who also share the same interest in serving Madison students. About me, my wife and I, my wife Laura and I, along with our two sons, Jack, a freshman at the high school, and Charlie, a fifth grader at TGS, have lived here in Madison for more than seven years. Our kids are active in the arts programs and many sports programs, including me serving as a baseball coach. My profession is helping districts across the United States do better, try new things, help to improve student outcomes. I'm often asked to speak at national education conferences on strategic planning and transformation, and serve as a trusted advisor to superintendents, school boards, and other district cabinet members. Most recently, I ran a national organization that provided on-demand, objective advice to more than 500 superintendents across the United States, big and small. Today, I lead a K-12 education consultancy, helping both school systems and education providers. I've cherished my time on the board these past few years, including these past few months. I'm proud of what we've done so far to adjust to this new normal, understanding that there is no playbook at all for how to do the right things. I think we're doing a pretty good job so far. I'm proud of some of the accomplishments I've helped lead, including renovating our lockers, full-day kindergarten, transformation and transparency to our business operations. For those that have attended board meetings in the past, you might have noticed that I voted no on our bills list for more than two years, looking for transparency in our finances, and then restructuring our internal structures to create accountability and support for our principles. Using my resources and network in K-12 education, I've helped get our superintendent expert coaching. I've helped get ST math to the district, our teachers and students using ClassroomG every day, our board management software, our website and app, to name a few. Three years ago, I couldn't make this forum. I was out of town at an education conference, so I had my, at the time, sixth grader, read a statement on my behalf. Some of the things he said about why I was running have happened, but there's still many, especially on the teaching and learning side I need to tackle. But there's been so much personal economic loss and hardship during this pandemic. It's created an opportunity to think differently. I promise, if you guys reelect me, I'll pass a new path forward with our community. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, Heather?
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. My name is Heather Reddy, and I am a current member of the Board of Education. I've served on the board for the past three years. During this time, I've been a member of the negotiations, education, operations, and human resources committees. I've also served as Vice President of the Board for a year, and I have been the President of the Board for the past year. The Board of Education is a nonpartisan group of volunteers, whose responsibility it is to represent their community to the school district and to ensure that their schools are well-run. I've always been passionate about the importance of public education in our country, thanks to my own public school education and the fact that my mother was a public school teacher. It has been a privilege to be able to serve our community with the focus being on the needs of our children, and I'm hopeful to have the opportunity to continue to do so. During my time on the board, our district has made many strides forward that have demonstrated our prioritization of kids first. Examples include expanding our special services programs throughout the district, implementing full-day kindergarten, championing a program that allows high school athletes to be exempt from gym and have a study hall instead when in season for their sports, and bringing our kids back to school in person this fall in a phased hybrid learning model. From a board relations perspective, in the past year I've been Board President, we focused on increasing community transparency into the work that we do by providing detailed committee and subject matter reports and more interactive board meetings via Zoom, among other improvements. Finally, I am a mother of three elementary-age children who attend Madison Public Schools. I'm deeply invested in the schools. During our time here, I've been an active PTO volunteer and fundraiser. I'm also a former technology professional with a focus on project management, program management, and customer service and delivery. I found that all of these skills have served me well during my time on the board, and I would like to have the opportunity to continue to do so.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Alrighty, next question. We're going to start with David Irwin on this.
You forgot Pam.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pam, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Pam Yaosi. I'm running for my second term on the Madison Board of Education. Over the past three years, I've served on the Human Resources, Education, and Negotiation Committees. And then last year, we've renegotiated three, successfully renegotiated three of our labor contracts with our three labor units. I also serve currently as the Vice President, and I work with the borough on shared services. I've lived in Madison for 15 years and have had children in the district for 14 of those 15 years. I am the only board member who personally has had experience K through 12, and I have another five years to go. In addition to my work with the board, I volunteer with various organizations, including American Corporate Partners, where I mentor servicemen and women who transition from the military to the corporate world. And I work with the Madison Eagle Christmas Fund coordinating gift distribution. In the past, I've been a Girl Scout troop leader, and I was the King's Road PTO treasurer. So I have a long history of volunteerism in our community. By trade, I'm a human resources professional. I have over 20 years of experience in organizational development, talent management, and diversity and inclusion at global corporations and professional services firms. These skills are the lens through which I provide counsel to Mark Schwartz and the administration of our district. I'm also, like David and Heather, super proud of the work that we've done over the last three years, in particular, bringing full-day kindergarten to the district, upgrading some of our facilities, although I know we have a long way to go, working through this very difficult time right now, bringing kids back to the classroom and hopefully bringing them back on a more consistent basis in the near future. Thank you so much for having us here today. Look forward to the rest of the hour.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have the next question. Okay. Here's the next question. "The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, the NJSLA, previously known as PARC, continues to demonstrate a poor achievement level for Madison's economically disadvantaged students as compared to surrounding schools. How would you direct school administrators to address and remedy this issue?" So we would start that with David Irwin.
Thank you, and that's a great question. And for those that have attended board meetings in the past, I know that this is something that I've brought up. We, you know, for those that have heard me say this, and now thankfully our superintendent and other district reports on this, our student achievement gap is somewhere upwards of 50%. In my circles in education, we call that education malpractice. Where, and what I think is, you know, a cause of this is that we're actually not necessarily doing service to all of our kids, but because the kids that we know that need it most aren't getting the right type of support. So I think as a first step, we have, you know, at least focused on what the issues are at the state of the schools address. Our superintendent shows what the data is, and I think a lot of people in the public just didn't understand that. We still have a lot of work to do to fix it. These past three years, I've had a lot of frustration that we haven't focused on it. We fixed some other things within the district. My hope is that if I'm on the board, I'll continue to help push it. This is my most important and critical issue for the board, is improving our gap, which benefits all of our kids.
Thank you. Okay. Heather Reddy?
Building on what David said, which I 100% agree with, the first part of the battle is understanding what we're facing. And we are facing a huge achievement gap with our economically disadvantaged children. What we need to do is we need to be able to do a better job of differentiate learning for all children, at all ends of the spectrum. It doesn't matter whether you're in the middle or at either end of the spectrum. Our district needs to find ways, find tools, such as ST math and other things that David actually has helped introduce to the district, that are able to differentiate learning for all of our children and help those struggling learners not fall deeper into their struggle, but lift them up. They shouldn't need outside tutoring. They shouldn't need anything outside of in-class support and understanding from their teachers and support within the schools.
Thank you. Okay. Pamela Yaosi?
Yeah, you know, it's tough going third, right? Because I completely echo what David and Heather have said. It's 100% differentiating learning for our children and doing sort of on-the-spot assessments, like our STAR assessments that we have, to understand kind of who's struggling and where they need to focus. We need to continue to find ways to provide the resources and tools to our teachers to enable them to do that. Time is always a challenge, and I think that is the most critical imperative, is how do we understand the environment that the kids are working in? How do we provide them with the support that they need while they're in school? So we aren't relying on tutors and other things to help kids get ahead. I think it's also critically important that we recognize that the school environment is a part of this factor, right? It has to be interesting and exciting and a place that kids want to be, and that will also help engage them. So again, I echo the sentiments. We have to do better here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Kara?
I agree with everyone, as always, but what I'm curious about is to understand the data as far as where the biggest gaps lie. Is it in the high school or is it at the elementary level? Because nationally, typically, you know, you do see that gap start to occur as they get in the upper grades. So I think we need to, as David was saying, just kind of understand where we're having that gap and analyze it a little bit more and start to collaborate with the teachers and the parents, because it takes a village, to see what we can do to, you know, incentivize and drill down as to what might be happening, whether it's inside the classroom or outside the classroom. But it's definitely something that's been on topic for the board.
Thank you. Okay, next question. "In light of the seriousness of this current health crisis, extra academic support is still a critical issue for some children. The Madison Public Schools have an excellent reputation for delivering a quality education to special-needs children. Has this pandemic lessened this? And if so, how would you propose to the administration to upgrade the program?"
I think I go first this time?
Heather goes first, yes.
Yes, okay. The good news is that for our most challenged students, my understanding is that they are in school five days a week. So whereas right now, our typical children are in school two days a week, our children with IEPs are able to get in four days a week, our most vulnerable population are in school already five days a week, which is wonderful. And they are there for longer than other students. And I think that us doing that shows our commitment to our special-needs community. I think that we need to aggressively move to Phase Two and Phase Three, if we can, the issue being eating and that sort of thing in school, but at least Phase Two, where we get more of our children in school. And we need to more actively communicate to our parent community that if their child is struggling at home and they don't have an IEP in the 504, they still should feel empowered to come to our principals and our special services administration and ask for extra support, because it is there. We do have these supports throughout the district, and I sincerely hope that parents are able to take advantage of it.
Thank you. Okay. Pamela Yaosi, can you answer that question also, please?
Sure. And, you know, I think I echo Heather's sentiments. I think it's also important to note that over the past several years, we have invested heavily in our special services and our social-emotional supports for our students in the district, adding caseworkers, psychologists, and, you know, other resources to provide better services to our most vulnerable students. The way the days are scheduled right now, the afternoons, since we can't eat lunch in school, the afternoons are meant to further support that population. I have seen myself, I've talked to parents who've needed some flexibility and, you know, sent them on the path to go about asking for that. And as Heather said, I think we need to continue to allow for that flexibility to try and, again, differentiate learning for our students and find the needs, find the solutions for the needs that they have. And again, also aggressively move to the next phase as quickly as possible, which requires all of us in the community to take this very seriously.
Thank you. Okay, Kara Hines, please.
I reiterate what both Heather and Pam have said. I think the district, you know, they're doing it five days a week. They've definitely improved the special-needs programs since my children have been in the school system. And I do feel like the district is open and will coordinate and work with parents with whatever their needs may be for their child. And going forward, even as a non-special-needs parent, I really am looking forward to Phase Two. And I think it's important to move this process along and kind of, you know, incorporate everyone.
Okay, thank you. And David Irwin?
Yes, quite frankly, our special-needs students are suffering. All of our students are suffering. These are not ideal situations at all. We are, our educators that are trained, our leaders, have not been prepared for this at all. We're, so to think that things are ideal is just, is not true at all. That being said, what's happening during this pandemic has made people start to think, like, what is education? How are we providing services? You know, right now, when we return to some point normal, no one's gonna, when we have a snow day, no one's going to question whether or not kids can work from home on that day. no one's gonna, when we have a snow day, no one's gonna question whether or not kids can work from home on that day. So it's allowed us to start thinking about how we can deliver services differently to students to be able to meet them where they are. Teachers are doing that right now. So, you know, as much as there's so much bad that's become of this pandemic, it's allowing us to think about how we could serve kids that we probably weren't serving so great in the first place. So, you know, like Heather and Pam say, and Cara, I hope we move to phase two and three because we need our kids back in school. We need them in front of, we need them with their teachers. But it's presenting opportunities for us to change. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Okay, next question. What are your views on remote learning versus hybrid in-person instruction? What do you see as the board's role in determining student safety? And how does that impact school programs? So we start with Pamela Yasi on that.
Okay, there's a lot in that question.
There is.
So what do I see as the board's role in determining the education for hybrid versus versus in-person? I don't think there's really a substitute for in-person learning, especially at certain age groups. I think that it's critical for our elementary school students to be able to connect with teachers. And it's critical for high school students too, maybe not as much. That being said, you know, we do live in a digital world. Our kids are digital citizens. They've learned a lot about how to interact in a way that maybe our generation doesn't quite get. That being said, we also, you know, in the corporate world, we operate this way all the time. This is probably my 10th Zoom call today. So I do think there is benefit to doing this while we have to. I would like to get back to the classroom. I agree with David's sentiments about this changes the way we look at things. Certainly, we were sort of forced into it, but I think this also offers opportunity. As far as the board's involvement, you know, the board sets policy for the, for the district and the board makes sure the district is well-run. We don't get into the details of education specifically and how it's delivered, but we do push hard to the district to make sure that it's high quality.
Thank you. Okay, Cara Hines.
Going off of what Pam started to end with was the board is basically to oversee and be a voice for the community. And not necessarily are we actually setting the policy. We're just overseeing and guiding and ensuring that we're the voice for everyone out there. As far as the board role in determining hybrid versus online learning, David, again, it's revolutionizing. It's changing the way we're learning all over. So this is going to totally radically change anything from college to elementary school. But it's really important, you know, especially I think in an elementary level age that they need to be in school. The, the social dynamics are really important to be taught, especially in the age of digital. And looking down at the iPhone constantly, you know, it's, it's really, we're here to listen to the community and make everyone feel safe and do what's best for the students' wellbeing.
Thank you. Okay, David Irwin.
Hi, thanks. You know, what we saw in the spring was, and I've said this at board meetings, was emergency remote learning. It wasn't blended learning. It wasn't good virtual learning. But it was what we had. We weren't anticipating this, and it's just what we did. To be honest, Madison's very far behind other districts, especially with our resources. We should have robust blended learning already in place. We should have, we should have a learning management platform that we don't have in place right now. I think this has forced us to realize where we have some deficiencies. And back to that earlier question around closing our achievement back, our ability to be able to do that. And I know we're working there. We're working hard to do it. For those that are, you know, attend board meetings, you see that I hold our administration accountable for this. And if I continue to serve on the board, this will be something that I continue to keep them holding accountable for. The good news is we're, and, you know, we're moving towards this path. And I think the parents of Madison expect this now. And, you know, and we as board owe it to our, owe it to our students to be able to have the best learning experience, whether it's in person or virtual. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Heather Reddy.
Thank you, Susan. I was wondering if you could just repeat the question because there were so many parts of it. I want to make sure that I, that I kind of bring everything together.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. What are your views on remote learning versus hybrid in-person instruction? And what do you see as the board's role in determining student safety? And how does that impact school programs?
Thank you. Okay, so my personal views on remote versus hybrid is that nothing replaces, as Pam said, nothing replaces in-person learning. In a perfect world, we would have in-person learning. I think hybrid, what we're doing now is one step up from David's emergency remote learning. It's definitely better than being fully remote. My kids look forward to going to school when it's hybrid. It's okay. It's fine. For us, it's fine. I think for younger kids, it's very problematic. And what is the board's role? The board's role is representing the community. Unfortunately, right now, we're in a situation where we really need to defer to the Department of Health, and we really need to trust our administration to work closely with the Department of Health to move, to move as quickly as possible through our phases, which I think everybody understands at this point. But our responsibility as board members is to push our administration to do the most that they're comfortable with to get our kids back in the classroom.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, next question, and this question starts with Cara. If elected, would you advise the administration to continue with professional days that instruct teachers and staff about the how-to's of online teaching?
That's a good question. I mean, professional development, I think, really should come, stem from, it, not professional development, I feel like the teacher should be able to choose what they want to learn about and what their initiative should be. And it should really come, the drive should come from them. And that's going to create the interest and the enthusiasm, I think, in the classroom. As far as for the online portion specifically, I think there are teachers that are very adept at the technology side of things. You know, if we were moving to a new learning platform, then yes, we would definitely need something like that. But I think it really depends on the individual. It doesn't hurt to have that for the teachers and offer it as an option. But I think they should ultimately be able to choose what type of learning they want to do.
Okay. David Irwin.
There's a landmark research report by this organization called TNTP, for which we have one of our community members, is one of their leaders there called the Mirage, that basically says that most of our professional development efforts across the United States just don't work at all. What we do in place is just not helpful at all. So having five days of in-service to provide professional development and ask our teachers to then do it perfectly just doesn't work at all. I said this, you know, at the kind of opening schools of just allowing our teachers five days to have something and then be free is, is, is not helpful. What is needed is having coaches, coaches that can spend time sitting with teachers, understanding what they do, the activity, the things that they want to do, how to, how to impact with kids and working with them day in and day out. That requires an investment on our part to be able to have those coaches there to support teachers when they need them on demand. Just think about anything that any of us have learned. We don't learn by sitting in place for five days and then going to do it. But if someone's sitting there helping us do it, we do it. And there are great models for that. It's been a big push that I've asked for to have that type of training there. We're getting, we're getting some strides, but we, a lot more progress.
Thanks. Okay, Heather Reddy.
For better or for worse, right now, I'm not sure that we have the luxury of choosing what type of professional development we offer. Right now, teaching our teachers how to better use online technology to deliver teaching to our students is necessary. It, it wasn't a choice that we made. It had to happen because we need our kids to be home and to be safe. And, you know, we're doing hybrid learning now. We may, we may proceed to phase two. And I think everybody understands that we may be home in the winter because of air filtration issues and that sort of thing. So it may be, it's hard for me to say, no, absolutely, we shouldn't be doing this because it's dictated by what our circumstances are. We may need to have PD that is around online learning. It's just a possibility. Is it ideal? Certainly not. But if that's how we have to deliver our education to our children, then we need them to be really, really good at it.
Thank you. Pamela Yasi.
As I mentioned in my intro, as my day job is working in human resources and part of that is providing learning in the corporate environment. And we've been learning in this way in a blended format over webinar, et cetera, for years. It is a different skill than standing up in front of a room and delivering content. And it requires development and it requires practice and honing. And I do appreciate David's comments about it's better to do, provide learning on the job and on the spot versus five days in advance of school. But unfortunately, that's what we're contractually obligated to provide. We don't have the luxury of providing on-the-spot sort of opportunities. It's a bit of a challenge. I do believe that we need to continue to hone those skills. It's different. It simply is. And I see that in comments from my sister, who's a teacher, and from others who I know who are teachers, that it's a lot that they're taking on right now. And it's hard. And, you know, providing support to get through that, I think, is critical.
Thank you. Okay. All right, next, next question. Okay, the recent protests about racial injustice in this country have raised awareness in many. What do you view as the role of schools to help educate the school community on these issues? And I'm going to start with David Irwin on that.
We, it is a role. I mean, this is one of the roles of education. You know, we live in a community, unfortunately, that isn't incredibly diverse. And we, you know, we owe it to our, and when our students leave the school, they enter an environment that's not necessarily like the environment that they live in right now. So we have an obligation to do it and to do everything that we can. I know that we were, you know, unfortunately during these circumstances, it's made it hard for us to then focus on something that's, that's as important as this. We need to do better at it. We don't, we don't, I don't think that we necessarily do a great job. Our, our staff and our, you know, administration doesn't reflect, you know, isn't very diverse. I know we've been trying, we're trying hard to, to try and change some of that diversity right now, but we, we need, we need to do better.
Thank you. Heather Reddy.
This is absolutely, I mean, David, David is really on point. And to add to that, it is absolutely the school's responsibility to teach our children to be citizens of an increasingly global world. It is our responsibility to teach our children not to be colorblind, but to be respectful and excited about people's differences and to celebrate people's differences. We want equity in our schools. That's part of the reason that we talk about the achievement gap because we want our kids to reflect the good of the world. And so it is our responsibility to teach that in the school. And it is our responsibility to show that in our administration and in our teachers. And we do need to increase the diversity within our board administration and teachers and staff.
Thank you. Okay, Pamela Yasi.
So I echo wholeheartedly David and Heather's comments. It is absolutely our role to address this in our schools. I mean, one of the things that we talk about regularly is that systemic racism exists. And one of the places you really see it is in what's taught in schools. And so we have an obligation to provide better, balanced, more accurate curriculum to our students and educate them in a way that demonstrates the contributions of Americans of all stripes and, you know, people around the world who have contributed to our society. It's absolutely imperative that we have a workforce that mirrors what our, our students are, look like demographically. And there's just, there's so much more that we should be doing and will be doing. And I applaud our administration for taking a very, very direct response to what's going on and being very bold about saying we're taking an anti-racist response.
Thank you. Okay, Cara.
So when my children initially were at Torrey J, there was years when we did not have MLK off. The district pulled it off the calendar. And eventually it went back on as a half-day initially, but it was never really addressed or talked about, and there wasn't a curriculum around it. As a PTO president, I know that at some point, somebody addressed it, whether it was before me, but we did bring in, start bringing in curriculum regarding the MLK. And we also built upon a community service day within Torrey J to address what the district was really lacking. And I feel they still really lack it at the junior school and educating. And these are the kids that are, you know, they're so innocent and they're willing to engage and get excited about, you know, talking about the differences and what they can do to contribute to the community. So I feel like there's always room for improvement.
There you go. Thank you. Okay, next question. And this one's going to start with Heather Reddy. Okay. Madison spent millions of dollars from the Green Village Road School Sale on school upgrades, including the creation of the high school STEM lab. High achieving AP and honor students refuse to take the high school STEM courses because their grade point averages will be lowered even with perfect scores in the STEM classes. Is that true? And if yes, how can it be fixed?
This is a great question. So it's hard to answer in a minute. The answer is sometimes yes. And the reason is because certain types of classes are weighted more heavily than others. So if you have a STEAM class that's not, or a STEM class that's not an AP class, it won't be weighted and therefore it could bring a GPA down for a student who otherwise takes mostly honors or AP classes that will be weighted. So it can affect. This is an ongoing debate within the administration, within the board. I shouldn't even call it a debate, a discussion around whether we wait properly. And the answer to that question is, as a person who hasn't had kids go through the high school, it seems completely wrong to me. I don't understand why we're still doing it. I definitely, I personally fall on the side of this is ridiculous and we need to fix it. But I don't know enough about waiting to answer it technically, how it can be done. But I can assure you that personally, I, I have and I continue to champion for this way of waiting to change because our highest achieving kids should be taking these classes.
Thank you. Okay, Pamela Yasi.
Yeah, so I am going to piggyback on Heather. So this is an ongoing problem. We've talked about it at board meetings. Different high schools wait in different ways. And the reality is when colleges look at, at, at grades from schools, they know that. And so they recalculate kids' GPAs when they're looking for admissions. So for example, an A in a, in an honors class in Madison, which is a 4.0 typically, is weighted, if you get an A in that class, it's a 5.0. At other schools, it might be a 4.5. So there is this, this inequity that's happening. And what we fear is that that is pumping out sort of vanilla kids who have very generic sort of transcripts and, you know, aren't being able to explore these very interesting classes that we're making available. So it is an ongoing problem. We've been talking about it for some time. It's definitely something that needs to be addressed. We want kids to explore different things. And we also want them to look very interesting when they're applying to colleges so that they can, you know, get into different types of schools and explore different things in a meaningful way.
Thank you.
I know David will have something to say about that, too.
Okay, Cara.
Quite honestly, I'm going to have to defer to the board here on this one. My, my high schooler is a freshman, so I'm still learning about the waiting process and, you know, how that AP versus regular classrooms. But I can understand, I wouldn't want to detract from anybody trying anything, especially we spent all this money on these labs. Let everybody try something and see, who knows what they might find and what they might like and enjoy. So if we can encourage that, I strongly would back that.
Okay, thank you. David Irwin.
The district sets the goalposts. I've said this often. So we set the goalposts and being a high achieving district that we are, parents, students want to go to whatever that highest goalpost is. Right now, our goalpost is take as many AP classes as you can. We set those waitings. We've known right now, especially during this environment, that what colleges are expecting are expecting sometimes differently from what we're asking to do in our schools. So we have that responsibility to do that. We have a brand-new principal in the high school who I've seen start to take some risks of doing some things that are good for students to be able to get away from these things, so these unintended consequences. We have work to do. All I can, what I can say is that we've created, we changed our administrative structures. We told our superintendent that he needs to focus on teaching and learning. And we have a new principal that's, you know, with, you know, that's deputized to carry this out. There's, it's, it breaks my heart to know that students don't use our STEM lab because of the consequences of not getting good grades. But it's our, you can't look any further than us in setting those goalposts. We're trying to move them. We got, as I said in my opening statement, we got a lot of work to do in this area. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Okay, Harding has been sending its high school students to Madison for about 50 years. The most recent Harding School Board agenda contained a resolution to investigate the severance to investigate the severance of its current high school send-receive relationship with the Madison School District. How does this affect future board planning? So we would start that with Pamela Yasi.
Sure. So we are actively negotiating. Every five years, that contract roughly or so comes up and we are actively negotiating that. So I can't comment on active negotiations. I can simply tell you that that resolution was pulled, I believe, from the agenda and was not passed.
Okay. So, okay. Um. Okay, Kara. I'm not sure we should continue to answer the question then if the resolution wasn't passed.
It was not, it was pulled from the agenda.
It was pulled from the agenda. So this question is, okay, so forget that question. How about that? What do you think of that? Okay, we're going to do that. Because it's, that's not a good question. Okay, here's, here's the next question. Moving the high school start time to 8:30 AM or later is widely viewed by healthcare professionals as a way to improve student physical and mental health. Would you support this change despite student supervision, parent work schedule and transportation concerns? If yes, how would you implement it? And now we will start with, well, we'll start with Pamela.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I do support this. I have three teenagers that I live with and they can easily sleep till 1 o'clock if I let them. So, you know, they need more sleep. Their, their brains are working overtime. I absolutely believe that they function better later in the morning. That being said, and it is something we've discussed as a board, it is a big undertaking to switch those schedules. And frankly, to do so would, in best scenario, would be to do it at the state level. It would require us to sort of flip-flop what we do with elementary schools. It would require our sports schedules to change. It would require our transportation schedules to change. So to do it on our own without the collaboration of school districts around us, I think would be a Herculean task and possibly not successful. So I do absolutely support later start times. I think all the science shows that teenagers need that time for brain development. It really has to come at a sort of a higher level than, than our district.
Thank you. Kara.
I know this is a topic that's been brought up or approached at some meetings in the past. And I would have to reiterate what Pam says. While I support it and there is science that says they need more sleep in the morning, it would be a complete overhaul to the system. And the response I've always heard from the board is usually the school sports is what really is going to be affected. It's going to be later sports times and trying to manage games and whatnot. That's usually the standard response. But taking into account all of the other moving objects as well and what you'd have to change, it would have to be, I agree, on a larger scale than just us making that change.
Okay, thank you. David Irwin.
I generally, I support later times too. However, as we've said during this conversation, we have 50-point achievement gaps in certain student populations. We have students afraid to take STEM classes because of the impact on their grades. By focusing on school start time right now, it's, there's only so much time and effort that I see both the board, the administration can do. And just because of all the logistics associated with it, I want to fix our achievement gap. I want to, I want our kids to have meaningful learning experiences. I want to prioritize, I want to prioritize those things. So I support it. I guess I also support Pam that we need to look from the state because what we do also has impacts with other districts around us. It's not just us making this decision. I think it's important. I understand that, you know, the research associated with brain development, but I also understand other, our other priorities of other things that we need to also fix. Thanks.
Okay, Heather Ready.
I think that I'll just close it out by saying that I agree with everyone's sentiments on this. I too would love to see later start times, but I think doing it in a vacuum without, without other districts around us, especially those competing in athletics with us is perhaps too much of a stumbling block. And there are significant issues in our district that likely should be addressed as a matter of priority before this one.
Thanks. Okay, we're going to move to essentially our last two questions. Just to let you know where we are. Okay. First question is COVID-19 has a multifaceted impact on our educational system. As a Board of Education member, what role do you see for yourself in the coming months, especially if we have another wave of COVID-19? So we're going to start with Kara.
I can't really answer that question because I am not on the board of that. And I think as my husband refers to this, this is a very VUCA environment. So it's volatile, uncertain, complex and not, you know, absolute kind of thing. So I, at this point in time, I give credit to these guys who are sitting in the seats and dealing with this and managing it as best as they can. And from the sidelines, what I can see is that I think they're doing a tremendous job. I know they're probably putting in more hours than they're used to, but there's going to be bigger things that are coming up, I'm sure, as we kind of go through this progression of things and going into the winter. So unfortunately, I'm not that qualified to respond to this question. But kudos to you guys.
Okay. David Irwin.
Thank you, Kara. And yes, I don't think any of us, when we signed up for this, had any idea that this is something we would ever have to manage or deal with. So, yeah, I mean, for us, it's, for me personally, it's, you know, holding our superintendent accountable that we have the right things in place. So I've, you know, I mean, personally, I've pushed them hard to, you know, to note that we haven't unturned one stone to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to have a good, safe environment for students. I published something in a national education publication called supermarkets and airplanes, and the superintendent, he's mentioned it before in some of his speeches, about doing everything it is that we can, that we feel safe going into supermarkets. Schools have only been open for two weeks. So we're just starting to see what that looks like. And I think some of our others, board members and that care money didn't say the same, that things are starting to feel safe. But we won't do those until we continuously find things, adjust and do them. I faith that we're doing those things right now. We still have a lot of work to do, but I hope to get us, to get to a point that we are, we feel safe going to school the way we feel safe going to supermarkets.
Thank you. Okay, Heather Ready.
So over the next few months, specifically over the next few months, I think that our major responsibility as board members is to keep the quality of education up. Our focus always needs to be on children first and on their education first and on their mental health first. This has been incredibly detrimental time to our children academically and emotionally. And I think that, you know, with the possibility of a second wave or a bigger first wave, wherever we are in this thing, it is our responsibility of, as board members, obviously, you know, we manage the superintendent. We make sure things have done well, are being done well. And I think specifically right now, there is so much risk of mental health problem with, with our children, with their families and, and really educational loss. And I think guarding against those things right now are absolutely critical. And that's where I think that's, that specifically may be the two balls that we need to keep our eyes on over the next few months. In addition to health and safety, obviously.
Okay, thank you. And Pamela Yasi.
So I echo everyone's sentiments. Maybe to just give a little color, I think two of the things that we do as a board, one thing is we constantly push the administration. We constantly say to Mark and David's referenced this, not good enough. We want to see more. Or, and then the other part of that is, as parents in the district, we have our ear to the ground on what's going on. We know. And we have our own mini focus groups of our own children who are experiencing this every day, right? So we see what's going on and we are able to say, hey, look, this is happening. Or we're not seeing this. Or we hear from teachers and, you know, we hear from a lot of people in the community. And our job is to convey that information to Mark or to Mr. Schwartz and to the administration so that they can do better. And our job is to constantly push to do better. And it's hard sometimes because people say, well, what about Chatham? Or what about what's going on here? What's, we have to do us. We have to do what's right for Madison. And so we are just super attuned to what's going on in our own community and really understanding the needs of our constituents so the district can respond.
Thank you. Okay, last question before we wrap up. And that is this. What needs to change about teaching and learning practices in Madison? In particular, in grade six to 12, what changes would you like to see at the middle school, MJS, and the high school, MHS, to better prepare students to compete in college/career? So we're going to start that with David Irwin, please.
Did you write that question for me? We, right now, we entirely focus way too much on group memorization. We don't provide our students with enough experiences that allow them to follow pathways of their interests, their preferences and demonstrate mastery. Because of COVID and what's happening right now, it's allowing for opportunities to start to, start to do those things. And this is, this isn't a blame that I put on our teachers by any stretch of the imagination. This has to do with giving our teachers the right type of support and support and guidance and resources, resources that I've helped bring to the district to help them start to do these things. We still have a very, very, very far way to go. And, you know, I see great schools all over the place, all over the country. I only wish that one day that my children have some of the same experiences of how they demonstrate mastery, of how they choose their own path the way that I've seen before. So I, as a board member, you know, I'm disappointed that I, we haven't made more progress in the last three years, but I know we've had other challenges. And my hope is over the next three years, we get there or at least make some progress.
Thank you. Heather.
Thank you. So I would focus on two things. And of course, I echo David's sentiments. I mean, really, he is the expert in this area on our board. But the two things that I would argue are critically important. Number one, we need to do better with differentiated learning. We need to meet every single kid where they are. I think we're starting to do, we do a pretty good job of it now on the special education side. We're starting to do a bit of a better job at the exceptional side, but we have a lot of kids in between. And I'm not, I'm not convinced that we're meeting all of them at their level and in, in what they're interested in. I think we need to do a better job of differentiating. The other thing that I think we need to do is we need to not so, not focus on having, you know, every kid take all the AP classes and be great at soccer and baseball or whatever. We need really interesting, we need to, we need to have kids who pursue their passions. You want to spend a suburb building for habitat, for humanity. You want to spend half a semester or a half a year in France. Let's encourage our children to do interesting things, to see the world, to do more, not just on vacation with their families, but through our educational programs.
Okay. Okay, Pamela.
I, again, I echo David and Heather's sentiments. You know, having a recent high school graduate from Madison who, you know, has spent four years of high school specializing in a sport, literally playing the sport year round, you know, it's exhausting. And these kids are leaving high school with specializing in things that, you know, while on one hand, it puts them on a certain path, it doesn't allow them to experiment and try and, you know, new in different things. You know, I've commented several times in board meetings that, you know, when I was in high school, I had a job and I played field hockey and I was in the band. And I, you know, I did a lot of stuff. It's so much harder to do that now. I would love for us to find a way to enable our kids to follow paths that they love and that interest them. We're starting to see some of that. The senior internship at the high school is a fantastic opportunity. I'd love to see us to, you know, having a trip, well, when we can travel again to some, you know, every year to someplace exciting. I'd love for us to open the worlds, you know, the eyes of all of our kids, not just the ones who are privileged. So I think there's much more we can do.
Thank you. Okay, and Kara.
Can you just reiterate the question one more time? So I will make sure that I understand it.
Yeah. What needs to change about teaching and learning practices in Madison? In particular, in grade six to 12, what changes would you like to see at the middle school, MJS, and at the high school, MHS, to better prepare students to compete in college careers?
Well, I mean, it's kind of, I feel like we're missing a gap and these kids have so much pressure on them to perform. So yes, we want to get them to college and have careers and be successful. But I feel like the world's moving at a faster pace now. So if there's anything to add into the curriculum, I think there's some mindfulness or meditation aspect that we need to input, whether it's into the health curriculum or, but it needs to be consistent just to manage the anxiety and stresses that they have in a different capacity. So that would be one of the things that I would like to see implemented somewhere from six through 12, and if not in the lower grades as well. But I would have to side with David as far as he knows what he's talking about on the curriculum aspect. And I think it's just a matter of speaking with the teachers and really seeing what they, what they think's important in their development.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, I've been asked to ask one more question. So let me make sure I have it. Okay. And the question is this. And I'm going to start with Heather. You get to answer this first. Is there diversity on the Madison Board of Education? And if not, are there plans to recruit, to recruit diverse members? Heather?
I think that's a great question. And I think that the unfortunate answer is that there isn't a great deal of diversity in our, in our board. I have children who are not Caucasian, but I don't know if anybody else on the board has. And my husband is not, but I'm not sure that there is any other. Oh, actually, that's not true. Tom has some diversity in his family as well. So no, we don't do a great job of diversity, but frankly, our community doesn't do it, isn't greatly diverse. So I think that in terms of recruiting, you know, I think all of us, especially, actually, all of us would love to see more diverse representation on the board. I think all of us talk to people regularly about joining the board. I know I do. But the reality is that this is a big job, really big job, and it's a really unpaid job and it's hard for people to make time. So we will continue doing it because we all believe in it and we all believe we need that diversity.
Thank you. Pamela Yasi.
Yeah, Heather, spot on. We have gender diversity, but that's it. We're about three, I think we're three women and four, five men. So it's, no, we're not, we don't have great diversity on the board. And Heather's right, we need to do better. But again, it's, it's a matter of people having the time and making the time to commit to this.
Okay. And Kara.
I'm going to reiterate the sentiments. It's not diverse and if, I'm happy to go recruit. So send me out and I will recruit anyone and everyone I see. So anyone is open to serving in a, in this role, then please jump on board.
And David Irwin.
Yes, I agree with everyone else too. What I will say is that we recognize this, we see this, we know that. And I would say that, you know, equally, the current, the current board, and I'm sure that sentiment goes far with Kara as well, we, we overcompensate for understanding this and try the best that we can to, you know, make up for the fact that we don't have diversity in our board. You know, as a side note, we were so close to finding a candidate for one of our top roles in our administration that represented what I see in the country as one of the, you know, the diverse leaders that we, that I just, that I could only hope would be attracted to come to a district like ours. And for circumstances, budget-related and others, we weren't able to join them. So I know as a board, we're trying to do the right things. And certainly I am, and the rest of the board feels the same way, that we're trying to do the right thing to increase the diversity. If we can't do it on the board, at least be able to do it with our administration. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Alrighty. Let me go to my little paper here. I'd like to give each candidate an opportunity to read a closing statement or make some closing remarks. And the way we're going to start that issue, you have up to two minutes each. And we're going to start off with Pamela going first. So you may start.
Thank you. It's been an honor to serve the Madison community on the Board of Education for the past three years. And it's been some of the most rewarding work that I've experienced in my personal and professional life, despite some of the challenges that we've had. Over the past three years, the district has made a lot of positive strides, but there's certainly more work to do. And I'd like the opportunity to continue to focus on that work. Over the next three years, what I'd really like to see the district focus on is a lot of what we've talked about, continuing to differentiate learning for students across our district. Not only will this help with our, closing our achievement gap, it'll also help account for any learning that may have been lost due to COVID. I also want to see us focus on creating a healthy, safe and inclusive environment for all of our students and staff. It's not just about what's taught in the classroom. It's also about the environment. It's not just about what's taught in the classroom. It's also about the environment that our students and staff operate in. The stance that we've taken about being very actively anti-racist is a great step, and we need to push that agenda very hard in our schools to make a difference here and support all of our students. And lastly, as we've said over and over again, we need to strengthen our financial positions so that we can plan for the future. We can address the facilities issues, the maintenance issues that have plagued us for a while. And that's really about the community coming together and deciding what's important. Times are tough right now, but you know, our, our schools are, you know, one of the things that make Madison the number one town to live in in New Jersey. And we need to keep investing in them. So I'd just like to thank the League of Women Voters for providing the forum and thank my fellow candidates for being here.
Thank you. Okay, okay, Heather, ready? Closing statement, two minutes.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you. I'm hopeful to have the opportunity to continue to serve on the Board of Education. My past professional experience has served me well during my time on the board and the experience that I've gained in my many school-related activities and disciplines would be an asset to the board in the future. I hope that my answers tonight really demonstrate my deep, ongoing investment in our community and specifically to our children. If I'm reelected, my priority for the district moving into the next three years will be really to focus on three different things. First, to refine our teaching and learning practices to allow us to meet the need of every child in our schools, regardless of where they land on the word learning spectrum. Second, to focus on inclusivity in our school culture. And third, to plan for the future of our facilities, which are in desperate need of attention. In the past three years since I've joined the Board of Education, our district has made so many positive steps forward in teaching and learning in school culture and in district operations. I believe there are truly great things ahead for the schools, and I'm well prepared to contribute meaningfully to the district moving forward.
Thank you. David Irwin.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and my colleagues for joining today. Thanks for helping arrange this. This is, this has been great. Sometimes I wish that the things that we're talking about doing, we actually made more progress in doing. So it's great to have this, this dialogue. I'll just leave with three things. As one and as others on this, on this, this panel have said, this is my profession. It's, I support districts doing this very same work all over the country. As a result of my relationships and networking, I've been able to bring resources to the district that every single student and every single teacher benefit from right now. If I'm on the board the next three years, I'll continue to do those same things and personally actively seek out and bring great things from Madison. Number two, often it can be seen to be, I can, I can often ask very tough questions, even if it makes people uncomfortable. Because I'm okay making adults comfortable because we're, what I, what I do is the best thing for kids. And sometimes what's best for adults isn't necessarily best for kids. What I said in my opening statement, I've continued to vote no on things where I want transparency. I know that the role that I've led has, has greatly contributed to some of our transfer, transformation of our business operations and transparency that we have there. And if on the board, you can count on me doing the exact same thing. And third, and I think, you know, people who know me and people have seen me in the board, and as my colleagues know, that I'm passionate about education. I do this because education is a fundamental right for everyone to have a high quality education and and I've chosen this career path because I'm so passionate about what education and what opportunities it provides people. And I really look forward to the opportunity to serve Madison for another three years. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and Cara.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for organizing this. I appreciate being part of it. Thank you, everyone, for letting me partake. And, you know, I feel I'm very privileged to be a candidate. And I would be privileged to serve the Madison community. Just to reiterate, while, you know, I think there is still a lot of work to be done as far as bridging the gaps within the learning system. My biggest concern really going forward is the budget. Because if we don't have the resources to bring in systems, training, everything, then, you know, their quality or what we would like to do is going to be impacted. So my goals would be to really think about revenue generation. I know maybe not on a large scale, but on smaller scales within the district, that's being done by the PTOs. They're filling needs in after-school programs. That is generating revenue. And I think that's something we could look at a larger scale and fill a gap in that regard and hopefully benefit from that. And as well as, you know, focus on the building maintenance and the infrastructure that eventually will become a liability at different points. And we really need to strategize and have a detailed plan as to how we're going to move forward and understand what's the critical, urgent things that need to be taken care of. And need to start focusing and delineating money for that. And unfortunately, we've delineated a lot of that right now towards adjusting for COVID. So I'd really like to be involved in that dialogue, strategize, move forward, and hopefully figure out ways to add to the budget because I really don't think we can rely on the state funding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I want to thank the candidates for participating in this. I want to ask anyone who's watching this to remember that this November, we're facing a very important election, particularly in light of the fact that perhaps as a nation, we are having some rather difficult times in light of a number of different issues. If you believe that your vote doesn't count, you're wrong. Your vote does count. And you need to vote on November 3rd. And that's, that's it. So thank you very much. Good night.